Mr. Stenit? Mr. Beard?
Present.
Mr. Blevins?
Here.
Mr. Blues? Ms. Crosby? Mr. DeCamp?
Here.
Mr. Ellinger?
Here.
Ms. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Ms. James?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Mr. McCord?
Here.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
And Dr. Stevens?
Present.
Thank you.
We have a quorum, so we're ready to proceed. If you would, join me in welcoming Kid Frank, the Care Associate Minister from Southland Christian Church, to the podium, and if you'll all rise, please, for the indication.
Thank you. Father, it is truly an honor to be able, just to start out this meeting in prayer. And, Father, we're just asking that tonight, that you bless every person that's represented in this room tonight. Father, we thank you that we could all gather, Father, just to better the city, and, Father, just to lead people, Father, who are looking to be directed, and so we just thank you again for just this opportunity. And, Father, you said to lift up our leaders, and so, Father, I just bless everyone that's here, and ask just for wisdom, for each and every one of them, for the issues that are discussed tonight, and, Father, just even for our state as a whole, Father, over the next couple of weeks, just with, Father, just the elections coming up, and just ask that you would just continue to guide and direct, and, Father, bless the state of Kentucky, and bless Lexington, and, Father, again, we just, we thank you for your goodness in our lives each and every day. We thank you, Father, that you are here and helping, and, again, just be glorified in all this said and done. We ask us in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. Thank you very much. I think the minutes of our last meeting on September 27th, or the September 27th meeting, have been circulated. Is there a motion?
No approval.
Have a motion, and by Councilmember Gordon, a second by Councilmember Beard, to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Those in favor, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, no.
Mayor, actually, we were wanting, I was requesting a motion to remove those because they were not complete. Sorry. If you look at the suggested action on your screen, please, sir.
I don't see it on the screen, but nonetheless.
Sorry. Well, I move to remove the minutes until November 15th council meeting. Thank you.
We'll take that as a substitute motion, and the substitute second. Any discussion? Then those in favor, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay. Motion case, thank you very much. We now, I believe, have some representatives here from the southeast Lexington baseball. Not yet. Okay. If they come in a little later, we'll roll on. Well, that enables me to have the opportunity to recognize some very, very special guests this evening, and I think the best way for us to proceed might be for me to ask John Nardolillo, who's the conductor of the UK Symphony Orchestra, to step to the podium, if you would, and tell us a little bit about what's going on this week and Thanksgiving weekend with the UK Symphony, and introduce our guests.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for having us here. I've brought a couple of students from the orchestra and our assistant conductor, graduate student, I think these are all actually graduate students and principal players from the orchestra. Could you guys stand? And I brought them down, and also... All right, now you can sit down again. We, tomorrow evening, we're playing a concert at the, at the Single Toes Center, the University of Kentucky Symphony Orchestra, and our special guest for the concert is the legendary folk singer, Arlo Guthrie, who's also joining us here. Arlo? We are thrilled to be part of the civic life of, of the city of Lexington, and we've been very pleased to have, you know, to be able to play for, for lots of people, both at our concerts and out of Keeneland and through the recordings we've made, and so this is very exciting for us, and it's exciting for us to be here. Later in November, we're going to take the program that we're presenting tomorrow night up to New York at the invitation of Arlo, and we're going to join him on the stage at Carnegie Hall in New York on Thanksgiving weekend to, to play again there. So, thank you, Arlo, for inviting us.
John, I want to tell you how enormously proud we all are of, of what I consider to be an extraordinary accomplishment for the UK Symphony Orchestra, and thanks to all of you for the hard work you've put in to merit this very special recognition for Lexington and Kentucky and the University of Kentucky. I think it is absolutely fabulous, and you're all to be commended. I don't know if anybody in the orchestra appreciates it, but this is an extraordinary moment in all of your lives, and I hope you have a great time in New York and a little later on this month during Thanksgiving weekend, which is a prime time to be in New York City, incidentally, and I wish you the best of luck tomorrow evening with your performance. Councilmember Linda Gordon and I have a proclamation which I want to present to Mr. Nardolillo here in just a moment. Let me read it for the benefit of everyone who's here and those who may be watching. Whereas the University of Kentucky Symphony Orchestra, comprised of the finest string, wind, and percussion instrumentalists from both graduate and undergraduate programs, has been an integral part of the cultural life of UK and the Lexington community, and whereas the orchestra's conductor, John Nardolillo, has conducted at the Kennedy Center, Carnegie Hall, and Philadelphia's Kimmel Center, and is the founder and music director of the Metropolitan Symphony Orchestra in Washington, DC, and whereas with the strength of the talented student musicians at the University of Kentucky, the UK Symphony Orchestra has become one of only a few college orchestras in the nation, even the world, to have been signed to a recording contract with Maxus, the world's largest classical label, and whereas the orchestra has made two recordings, Music of the Horse 2006, in collaboration with Keeneland, and In Times Like These, featuring Arlo Guthrie and his music, and whereas student musicians will perform with Arlo Guthrie in Carnegie Hall November 24th. Now therefore, I adjourn you, Mayor of Lexington, for the Urban County Government, do hereby proclaim November 2007 as UK Symphony Orchestra Month. Congratulations. And now, Mr. Guthrie, if you'll come forward. I have surveyed the council and found out that your biggest fan, not only fan, but biggest fan, is none other than Councilmember Gordon, and so together, we wanted to present you with a key to the city here, in the hopes that you'll come back often and visit with us when you can.
That is really great. Thank you so much. I do appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Let me, let me just say something. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the orchestra, but John Nardolillo and I have worked together for about eight years, trying to, and we've worked with forty of the great American orchestras over the last eight years. We've tried to record this project for a number of years. We've actually recorded at Carnegie Hall. We've recorded at the Kennedy Center in Washington, and some other great halls. The only time that it actually worked was when we were here last year, and we had just happened to hit one of those great nights when the orchestra played on a professional level beyond what we were able to get with other great orchestras and other great venues, and produced a record that is going to stand the test of time, I think, for a long time. It's not one of these pop records, you're not going to see it in charts or things like that, but for people who love great music, it's going to be a valued treasure in their lives. So I want to take the opportunity to thank John, to thank the orchestra, and to thank you for recognizing them. I think it just says a hell of a lot about who you are here. I'm happy to take them to New York City and Carnegie Hall.
It looks like we may be about three CDs short, and so I want the hardware back until we get the... We'll find you. We'll find you. Now, thank you all very, very much for coming. We'll be delighted to have you stay as long as you care to, but if you need to leave, we'll certainly understand. Unless someone has furthered business at this point, we will go ahead, Madam Clerk, and proceed with the ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance number one, an order to change in the zone from a single-family residential R-1C zone to a high-density apartment R-4 zone for 6.62 net, 6.89 gross acres of property located at 1201 Devonshire Avenue, subject to a certain use restriction imposed as a condition of granting the zone change, Scott Basler and Neil Evans. Number two, an ordinance amending Article 1-11 and subsections B and N of Article 8-16 of the zoning ordinance to define a banquet facility, to allow banquet facilities as a principal use in the neighborhood business, be one zone, and to specify the off-street parking requirement for banquet facilities. Number three, an ordinance amending Section 21.5 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of Engineering A Senior Grade 109N, creating one position of Engineering Technician Grade 111N, and reclassifying the incumbent in the Division of Traffic Engineering to become effective retroactive to September 3rd, 2007, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 68. Number four, an ordinance amending Section 21.5 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of Staff Assistant Grade 107N and creating one position of Staff Assistant Senior Grade 108N in the Division of Family Services, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 69. Number five, an ordinance amending Section 9 of Ordinance Number 330-2001, as amended by ordinances Number 286-2003, 272-2004, and 143-2006, extending the payments and benefits provided to activated employees who are members of the United States Armed Forces, Reserve, or National Guard until they are released from active duty or until January 1, 2009, whichever shall first occur. Number six, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Fayette County Commonwealth Attorney's Office for a fast-track prosecutor for the Street Sales Enforcement Project at a cost not to exceed $47,932, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 70. Number seven, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number 67. Number eight, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for funds in the amount of $5,600 from Neighborhood Development Funds in the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry for a quiet zone application for the Waller Avenue Rosemont Garden Railroad Crossing, and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number 74. Number nine, an ordinance creating Section 17B-13 of the Code of Ordinances to create several penalties for any violation of Chapter 17D regulating street trees, to allow appeal of citations to the Infrastructure Hearing Board, and to allow abatement of violations, amending Section 14-10 Subsection 6, to reflect a change in the division for the Urban Forester, and amending Section 16-76 to grant jurisdiction to the Infrastructure Hearing Board over enforcement of ordinances by the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry. Number 10, an ordinance amending Section 21.5 of the Code of Ordinances, creating one position of Equipment Operator Senior Grade 109N in the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry. Number 11, an ordinance amending Section 21.5 of the Code of Ordinances, transferring two positions of Clerical Assistant Senior Grade 106N and the incumbents from the Division of Computer Services to the Division of Accounting, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 72. Number 12, an ordinance amending Section 22.5 of the Code of Ordinances, creating one temporary position of Administrative Officer Part-Time Grade 118E in the Division of Waste Management, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 71. And number 13, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a loan agreement with Hope Center Incorporated for funds from the Home Program for the construction of an apartment building for use as transitional housing for low-income men recovering from substance abuse, at a cost not to exceed $500,000, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 73.
You've heard the ordinances that have received second reading. Is there a motion to approve those ordinances? No approval, Mayor?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beard, and a second by Councilmember Gordon. Any discussion? Seeing none, I think we're prepared to vote. Madam Clerk, if you'd call it a roll, and members, if you would, vote electronically, please.
Mr. Stenit?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby? Mr. DeCamp? Mr. Ellinger? Ms. Gordon? Aye. Mr. Gray? Ms. James? Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes.
Mr. Myers? And Dr. Stevens?
Aye. Thank you very much. Those ordinances are adopted. Madam Clerk, if you'll proceed to the ordinances for first reading, please.
Ordinance number 14, an order to change in the zone from a two-family residential R-2 zone to a townhouse residential R-1T zone for 0.27 net, 0.35 gross acre property located at 419 South Upper Street, and 422 through 426, 428, 432, and 436 Lawrence Street, WML Properties LLC, and Douglas E. Coffin, amended. Number 15, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation of $1,000 from Walmart for upgrades to the hazardous devices unit bomb robot, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 81. Number 16, an ordinance amending Section 21.5 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of Vehicle Equipment Mechanic Grade 110N, and creating one position of Vehicle and Equipment Technician Grade 112N, and reclassifying the incumbent in the Division of Fleet Services pursuant to Ordinance Number 197-2002, adjusting the salary of one employee occupying the position of Vehicle and Equipment Technician in the Division of Fleet Services after review pursuant to the Pay Equity Ordinance, all to become retroactive to August 20th, 2007, and appropriating funds pursuant to Budget Schedule Number 77. Number 17, an ordinance amending Section 21.5 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing three positions of a Human Resources Manager Grade 119E, and creating three positions of a Human Resources Manager Senior Grade 121E, and reclassifying the incumbents in the Division of Human Resources to become effective retroactive October 1, 2007, and appropriating funds pursuant to Budget Schedule Number 79. Number 18, an ordinance amending, ordinance number 205-2007, to correct a clerical error in the subsection line number for Network Security Engineer in the Division of Computer Services. Number 19, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Department of Military Affairs Division of Emergency Management, which grant funds are in the amount of $125,320 federal funds, for continuation of the chemical stockpile emergency preparedness program, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 76, and authorizing the mayor to transfer incumbent funds within the grant budget. Number 20, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Division of Emergency Management, which grant funds are in the amount of $650,000 federal funds, for construction of a tornado safe shelter at suburban mobile home park, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $340,000 as a local match to be provided as a land contribution in the form of an easement by the property owner appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 80, and authorizing the mayor to transfer incumbent funds within the grant budget. 21, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Department of Education, which grant funds are in the amount of $112,500 federal funds under the 21st Century Community Learning Center Program for continuation of the homework huddle and dare-to-be-you programs at the Gainesway Community Empowerment Center and after-school programming at Tates Creek Elementary School, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 82, and authorizing the mayor to transfer incumbent funds within the grant budget. Number 22, an ordinance amending Section 21.5 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of Staff Assistant, Staff Assistant Grade 107N, and creating one position of Clerical Assistant Grade 104N in the Department of General Services, and appropriating the funds pursuant to Budget Schedule Number 85. 23, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a reimbursement agreement with C. Brothers LLC and Himalaya Properties LLC for developer reimbursement for construction of a sanitary sewer trunk line at a cost not to exceed $447,780.30, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 86. And number 24, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number 84.
Thank you very much. There are no motions with regard to those ordinances. We will proceed, Madam Clerk, to the resolutions for second reading.
Resolution number one, a resolution accepting the bid of LMM Commercial Cleaning, establishing a price contract for custodial services for the recycling center. Number two, a resolution accepting the bids of Graybar Electric Company Incorporated, Rexel Incorporated, Annixter Incorporated, and Communications and Electrical Supplies Incorporated, establishing price contracts for fiber-optic cable and control equipment for the Division of Traffic Engineering. Number three, a resolution accepting the bids of Univar USA Incorporated, Brim Tag Mid-South Incorporated, and KA Steel Chemicals Incorporated, establishing price contracts for odor-controlled chemicals for the Division of Sanitary Sewers. Number four, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying fee simple property from Preston W. and Anita W. Madden, Preston Ellen, and Kevin Alsbrook, Patrick W. and Jennifer S. Madden, WWMLLC, and Patricia L. Madden as trustee of Fund B of the Patrick Edward Madden Medical Living Trust, located at 1745 Bryant Road for Phase One of the Brighton East Rail Trail Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $10 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement from Kitty Seals Estate, located at 630 Caden Lane for the Caden Town Sanitary Sewer Project, at no cost to the Urban County Government with usual and appropriate closing costs. Number six, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement from Elizabeth and Errol Jones, located at 646 Caden Lane for the Caden Town Sanitary Sewer Project, at no cost to the Urban County Government with usual and appropriate closing costs. Number seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement from Helen Young and Margaret Johnson, located at 662 Caden Lane for the Caden Town Sanitary Sewer Project, at no cost to the Urban County Government with usual and appropriate closing costs. Number eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement from Charles Thomas and Rachel White Thomas and Joyce E. McGee and Neil McGee, located at 690 Caden Lane for the Caden Town Sanitary Sewer Project, at no cost to the Urban County Government with usual and appropriate closing costs. Number nine, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement from James P. Couch, located at 727 Caden Lane for the Caden Town Sanitary Sewer Project, at no cost to the Urban County Government with usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 10, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement from News, located at 752 Caden Lane for the Caden Town Sanitary Sewer Project, at no cost to the Urban County Government with usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 11, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement from Alvin, Eamonn, Carr, Chrisanthia, Seals, located at 776 Caden Lane for the Caden Town Sanitary Sewer Project, at no cost to the Urban County Government with usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 12, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement from Bernatia L. Kendrick, located at 784 Caden Lane for the Caden Town Sanitary Sewer Project, at no cost to the Urban County Government with usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 13, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement from James and Sandy Reynolds, located at 2822 Liberty Road for the Caden Town Sanitary Sewer Project, at no cost to the Urban County Government with usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 14, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement from James and Sandy Reynolds, located at 2826 Liberty Road for the Caden Town Sanitary Sewer Project, at no cost to the Urban County Government with usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 15, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement from Rosemary Griffith, located at 2838 Liberty Road for the Caden Town Sanitary Sewer Project, at no cost to the Urban County Government with usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 16, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement from Dennis Anderson, located at 2852 Liberty Road for the Caden Town Sanitary Sewer Project, at no cost to the Urban County Government with usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 17, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement from Janice Beal, located at 820 Campbell Lane for the Caden Town Sanitary Sewer Project, at no cost to the Urban County Government with usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 18, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easements from Rick G. and Deborah Moore, for property located at 813 Mickey Lane for the Caden Town Sanitary Sewer Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $930 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 18, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement from Alan W. and Juan Francis, located at 3061 Todd's Road, for the Caden Town Sanitary Sewer Project, at no cost to the Urban County Government with usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 20, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement from James D. and Sherry G. Taylor, located at 308 Warren Todd's Road, for the Caden Town Sanitary Sewer Project, at no cost to the Urban County Government with usual and appropriate closing costs. Number 21, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a statement of compliance with Commonwealth Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for Bridge Posting Requirements. 22, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an engineering services agreement with CDP Engineers Incorporated for Red Cliff Road Stormwater Improvement Design at a Cost Not to Exceed $38,500. 23, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a clinical services agreement with University of Kentucky Chandler Medical Center, College of Medicine, Department of Pediatrics for the provision of health care services to clients of all the family care center, at a cost not to exceed $303,184. Number 24, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the University of North Florida Training and Service Institute for Bloodstain and Interpretation Training Course at a Cost Not to Exceed $9,000. 25, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a memorandum of agreement with the Kentucky Law Enforcement Council for Conducting Paragras for Law Enforcement Candidates for Other Agencies at No Cost to the Urban County Government. 26, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a mutual non-disclosure agreement with Police Reports.us LLC for distribution of police reports on the Internet at no cost to the Urban County Government. 27, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement with Kentucky Mansions Preservation Foundation Incorporated for the Mary Todd Lincoln House, in conjunction with the Abraham Lincoln Bicentennial Celebration, at a Cost Not to Exceed $10,000. 28, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute contracts and any other agreements with Everest and Demity Insurance Company for asbestos liability insurance for the term October 16 through, October 16, 2007, through October 16, 2008, at a Cost Not to Exceed $4,427.75, and ACE USA for aviation liability insurance for the term of October 21, 2007, through October 21, 2008, at a Cost Not to Exceed $19,080, and authorizing payment to March USA on behalf of Everest and Demity Insurance Company and ACE USA. Number 29, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number one to the contract with CM Construction for the South Point Parking Lot, increasing the contract price by the sum of $42,810.50 from $39,700 to $82,510.50. Number 30, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number one to the contract with Free Contracting Incorporated for the Solid Waste Facility Expansion Project, increasing the contract price by the sum of $7,092.80 from $1,208,101.20 to $1,215,194. Number 31, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a release of easement, releasing a portion of a streetlight easement on lots 643 and 644 in Masterson Hills subdivision. 32, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government Thirty-Two: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to purchase ten Pro-Laser III bat with battery and charger for use by the Traffic Offense Unit from Custom Signals Incorporated as sole source provider at a Cost Not to Exceed $28,060. Thirty-Three: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute a professional services agreement with Kinsel Klein-Gossman LLC for the Downtown Streetscape Master Plan at a Cost Not to Exceed $170,000. And Number Thirty-Four: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute an agreement with Gulfview Estates Neighborhood Association Incorporated, $1,000 for the office of the Auburn County Council at a Cost Not to Exceed the sum stated.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The floor is open for a motion to approve those resolutions received in the second reading. I have a motion by Councilmember Stennett and a second by Councilmember McCord to approve those resolutions. Is there any debate? Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, and members please vote electronically.
Mr. Stennett? Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Aye.
And Dr. Stevens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those resolutions are approved, and I think we're ready to move on to the resolutions for first reading.
A resolution accepting the bid of Todd Johnson Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $666,372.41 for the Meadows Northwood Arlington Neighborhood Improvement Phase II-D. Number Thirty-Six: A resolution accepting the bid of Dixon Electric, establishing a price contract for traffic signal installation and maintenance. Number Thirty-Seven: A resolution accepting the bid of AC Metalworks in the amount of $50,070 for leaf collection boxes for the Division of Fleet Services. Thirty-Eight: A resolution accepting the bid of Jay Ettinger &amp; Son Incorporated in the amount of $40,672 for dump truck bodies for the Division of Fleet Services. Thirty-Nine: A resolution accepting the bid of Baldwin &amp; Sellers Incorporated, establishing a price contract for radar speeder signs for the Division of Traffic Engineering. Number Forty: A resolution accepting the bids of Ready Mix Contract and Herod Concrete and Stone Company, establishing price contracts for wet mixed concrete for the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry. Number Forty-One: A resolution accepting the bid of Tennis Technology Incorporated in the amount of $64,991 for the Shellato Park Tennis Court Resurfacing. Number Forty-Two: A resolution accepting the bid of Southern Sales Company Incorporated in the amount of $23,405 for a sewage pump for the Division of Water and Air Quality. Number Forty-Three: A resolution accepting the bids of Jay Ettinger &amp; Son Incorporated, McNerius Truck and Manufacturing Municipal Equipment Incorporated, and WasteEquipmentParts.com, establishing price contracts for refuse parts for the Division of Fleet Services. Number Forty-Four: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to accept a donation of land located at East Third Street and Midland Place to and to execute a memorandum of agreement of all unnecessary closing documents for the Isaac Murphy Memorial Art Garden. Number Forty-Five: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and to accept a general warranty deed from Lexington Habitat for Humanity Incorporated for the property located at 504 Georgetown Street at no cost to the Auburn County Government. Number Forty-Six: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent easement and temporary construction easement from the Board of Education of Fayette County, Kentucky, located at 811 Star Shoot Parkway for the Star Shoot Parkway Extension, and authorizing payment in the amount of $10 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number Forty-Seven: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and to accept a deed for the properties located at 300 and 308 Elm Tree Lane for Faith Community Housing Foundation Incorporated for the Lyric Theater Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $45,000 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number Forty-Eight: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and to accept a deed for the properties located at 310 and 312 East Third Street, and 309 and 311 through 313 Gunn Street from O.L. Hughes &amp; Sons Mortuary for the Lyric Theater Improvements Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $250,000 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number Forty-Eight, Forty-Nine: A resolution authorizing and directing the Division of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the Auburn County Government to purchase Gulf Coast Shop resale merchandise from the list of sole source providers attached here to and incorporated herein. Number Fifty: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement with Lexington Fayetteville County Airport Board for airline-related services with an effective date retroactive to July 1, 2007 at a Cost Not to Exceed $50,000. Number Fifty-One: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute change order number four to the contract with Nesbit Engineering Incorporated for Meadows Northwood Arlington Public Improvements Design Phase III, increasing the contract price by the sum of $32,100 from $172,858.78 to $204,958.78. Number Fifty-Two: A resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Jody Evans, Fleet's parts specialist, grade 109N, 13.815 hourly in the Division of Fleet Services, effective November 12, 2007; Gracie Wu, staff assistant, grade 107N, 13.230 hourly in the Division of Building Inspection, effective November 12, 2007; Philip Steifel, computer systems manager senior, grade 120E, $2,750 bi-weekly in the Division of Computer Services, effective October 1, 2007; Frank Motang, GS specialist, grade 114N, 18.238 hourly in the Division of Planning, effective November 12, 2007; Joseph Davis, public service worker senior, grade 107N, 14.645 hourly in the Division of Parks and Recreation, effective October 29, 2007; ratifying the permanent civil service appointments of William Pugh, security supervisor, grade 112N, in the Department of General Services, effective October 16, 2007; Donald Donaway Jr., security officer, grade 106N, in the Department of General Services, effective October 16, 2007; Fred T. Stockley, building inspector, grade 113N, in the Division of Building Inspection, effective October 30, 2007; Clay Gottwald, building inspector, grade 113N, in the Division of Building Inspection, effective October 30, 2007; Brandon Cosolo, building inspector, grade 113N, in the Division of Building Inspection, effective October 30, 2007; approving the unclassified civil service appointment of John Cubine, senior advisor for policy and budget, grade 212E, $4,038.47 bi-weekly in the Office of Policy and Budget, effective November 19, 2007. Number Fifty-Three: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute a facility usage contract with Fayette County Board of Education for usage of Paul M. Mars Dunbar High School at a Cost Not to Exceed $1,377.63. Number Fifty-Four: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute a second amendment to contract number 4150 with GRW Engineers Incorporated for additional design services on the Conference of Sanitary Sewer Project at an additional cost not to exceed $84,000. Number Fifty-Five: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement with North Kentucky Humanities Council Incorporated for the Abraham Lincoln Bicentennial Celebration at a Cost Not to Exceed $25,000. Fifty-Six: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement with Simon &amp; Company Incorporated for services related to federal matters and funding at a Cost Not to Exceed $39,000. Fifty-Seven: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute an agreement with Sunfire Kids Incorporated for operation of a visitation center as part of the supervised visitation and safe exchange program at a Cost Not to Exceed $158,750. Number Fifty-Eight: A resolution changing the street name and property address numbers of 217 Pasadena Drive to 2385 Huguenard Drive, and 621 Mannington Place, units 1 through 11 to 3250, 3252, 3254, 3256, 3258, 3260, 3262, 3264, 3266, 3268, and 3270, Mannington Court of 754, 743, 750, 755, and 753 Wilderness Road to 2135, 2139, 2143, 2154, and 2158 Wilderness Court of 507, 511, 515, 519, 521, 523, 525, and 537 Wilderness Road to 2347, 2351, 2355, 2359, 2363, 2367, 2371, and 2375 Wilderness Place, and changing the property address numbers of 715 Charles Avenue to 721 Charles Avenue of 325 Cold Pepper Road to 333 Cold Pepper Road of 2321, and 2345 Elkhorn Road to 2320 and 2344 Elkhorn Road of 538 East High Street to 530 East High Street of 2680 Newtown Pike to 2672 Newtown Pike of 2213 Richmond Road to 2209 Richmond Road of 238 McDowell Road, units 101, 101, 201, and 200 to 238 McDowell Road, units 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 of 518, 514, 538, 589, and 747 Wilderness Road to 512, 516, 541, 591, and 742 Wilderness Road, all, effective 30 days from passage. Number Fifty-Nine: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute an agreement with Dixie Basketball and Cheerleading Incorporated, $500; Cardinal Valley Neighborhood Association Incorporated, $500; and Bluegrass Community Agency, $912 for the office of the Auburn County Council at a Cost Not to Exceed the sum stated. Number Sixty: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute an agreement with the Black Church Coalition of Bluegrass Incorporated, $1,800, and Tate's Brook Neighborhood Association Incorporated, $300 for the office of the Auburn County Council at a Cost Not to Exceed the sum stated. Number Sixty-One: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute an agreement with New World Systems Corporation for software maintenance upgrades and revisions at a Cost Not to Exceed $240,369. Number Sixty-Two: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute an agreement with CDP Engineers Incorporated for neighborhood study and evaluation phase for the Green Acres Storm Sewer Project funded by the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority at a Cost Not to Exceed $260,000. Number Sixty-Three: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute an agreement with Kentucky Utilities Company to install electrical facilities to provide West Hickman wastewater treatment plant with redundant power at a Cost Not to Exceed $118,741. Sixty-Four: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute an agreement with Kentucky Utilities Company to install electrical facilities to provide Town Branch Wastewater Treatment Plant with redundant power at a Cost Not to Exceed $275,160. Number Sixty-Six, Sixty-Five, excuse me, a resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent storm sewer drainage, sanitary sewer easement, and temporary construction easement from Paige &amp; Matthew Good located at 226 Forest Park Road for the Elizabeth Street Drainage Improvement Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $23,125 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number Sixty-Six: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement from High Acres Development Company Incorporated for construction of a sanitary sewer trunk line across Spring Lake Golf Course by Sea Brothers LLC at no cost to the Auburn County Government. Number Sixty-Seven: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute a pressure release of easement, releasing a portion of a sanitary sewer easement at 4501, 4513, 4517, 4521, and 4525 Elm Park. Number Sixty-Eight: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute a release of easement, releasing a utility easement on property on the Mulliken property, Shady Hills. And Number Sixty-Nine: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute releases of easement, releasing a utility easement and a sanitary sewer easement on property located at 2553 Nicholasville Road.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Are there any motions with regard to the resolutions that have received their first reading, Councilmember Stevens?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for suspension of the rules in second reading for Resolution Number Forty-Four.
Are there any other motions? I have a motion and second. Any, any, Councilmember Maloney?
Sixty-Three and Sixty-Four, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Stennett.
Number Forty-Six, Mayor.
Councilmember Brevins?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to suspend the rules for Number Sixty-Nine, the property on its request, and we do so so they can begin construction.
So move. Councilmember, all right. Councilmember James?
Number Thirty-Five and Fifty-One, please.
I see no further indication people wish to add resolutions to the list, so my current list indicates that we have a motion to suspend the rules to give second reading to items Thirty-Five, Forty-four, Forty-six, Fifty-one, Sixty-three, Sixty-four, and Sixty-nine. That's correct. We have a second, so I think we're ready to vote. Those in favor of suspending the rules to grant those items second reading, let it be known by voting aye electronically. Those opposed vote nay. Motion has the required number of votes. So, Madam Clerk, if you will give those items second reading.
A resolution accepting the bid of Todd Johnson Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $666,372.41 for the Meadows Northwood Arlington Neighborhood Improvement Phase II-D. Number Forty-four: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to accept a donation from Mayan located at East Third Street in Midland Place, and to execute a memorandum of agreement of all necessary closing documents for the Isaac Murphy Memorial Art Garden. Number Forty-six: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accept a deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer, permanent easement, and temporary construction easement from the Board of Education of Fayette County, Kentucky, located at 811 Star Shoot Parkway for the Star Shoot Parkway Extension, and authorizing payment in the amount of $10 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. Number Fifty-One: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute change order number four to the contract with Nesbit Engineering Incorporated for Meadows Northwood Arlington Public Improvements Design Phase III, increasing the contract price by the sum of $32,100 from $172,858.78 to $204,958.78. Number Sixty-three: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute an agreement with Kentucky Utilities Company to install electrical facilities to provide West Hickman wastewater treatment plant with redundant power at a Cost Not to Exceed $118,741. Sixty-four: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute an agreement with Kentucky Utilities Company to install electrical facilities to provide Town Branch Wastewater Treatment Plant with redundant power at a Cost Not to Exceed $275,160. And Number Sixty-nine: A resolution authorizing and directing the mail on behalf of the Auburn County Government to execute releases of easement, releasing a utility easement and a sanitary sewer easement on property located at 2553 Nicholasville Road.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The floor is open for a motion to approve those resolutions that just received second reading. So move.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Brevins, and a, excuse me, a motion by Councilmember Brevins, and a second by Councilmember Myers. Is there any discussion? Then we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor, please vote aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay. And Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Okay. Mr. Stennett?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Gordon?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
And Dr. Stevens?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Those resolutions are adopted. The next item on the bill, but on the agenda, is communications from the mayor. The floor is open for a motion to approve.
Miss Approval.
I have a second, a motion by Councilmember Gordon, and a second by Councilmember Stennett to approve those items. There's one typographical that we corrected on Tuesday but didn't make it to the docket. Councilmember Blues, do you want to address that?
Thank you, Mayor. To correct that...
To correct that, uh, that error here, I move that on number six, the, uh, appointment of Donna McMahon be moved to the line seven and, uh, and she be correctly appointed to the, uh, to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. So moved.
Thank you. The motion is to delete Donna McMahon from item six and add her to item seven. Any discussion? Those in favor then, please vote aye electronically, those opposed vote nay electronically. Thank you. That motion carries. We're now ready to vote on the original motion to approve the communications from the mayor as amended. Any discussion? Those in favor then, please vote aye electronically. Those vote opposed vote nay. First vote seems to be in order. Those in favor, please vote aye early. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. You have a number of items and the communications from the mayor in the information only department. I believe the building inspection report has previously been circulated, and we have already announcements. Councilmember Maloney?
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, announce that Commissioner Helm, it, today we voted on a zone change finalized on Engleside, and there's been a lot of concerns in, about the folks who live in Engleside having a place to live or being displaced. I assume if they do start moving with this, that we sure have some folks in there where they can be contacted, you guys, or, uh, because I've got a feel, I've, I've not been allowed to say anything about the zone change, but I do have some concerns about the families that have been living in these trailers and that we have a place for them, because I've got a feeling the phone's gonna be ringing off the hurt now. If you can help us on, or maybe you might already have a plan. If you can help detail that, that'd be great.
We have met with the developers of the property. It is my understanding that since the property is in private hands, this is not something that the city has condemned. Our role would be primarily to provide information and assistance and support, uh, help individuals to make the connection. As of today, we have had only one family really to contact us directly. We set up three appointments for that family to, uh, come in and talk with us, and we also offered to meet them, uh, wherever they wanted us to meet them. They canceled all three of the appointments. So we do stand ready to provide assistance. Uh, we've made contact with the Lexington Housing Authority. We've notified our partner agencies of the pending, uh, changes, um, but we're, we're simply-
Appreciate it.
-sitting on standby.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further announcements? The last item on the, the agenda this evening is public comment, and the only person who's indicated a willingness or an interest in speaking is, uh, Bernard McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, if you would, uh, come to the podium and give us your address.
Your Honor, members of the council, I don't know why East Maxwell Street is currently closed just east of Rose, but it's definitely turning traffic into a worse mess than usual. I realize that sometimes streets have to be dug up to fix underground utilities, but I think that letting anyone dig up or close the full width of an arterial street during rush hour is a mistake and should be avoided unless there is imminent danger of either a gas leak causing an explosion or the street caving in from a water leak having hollowed out the ground underneath or something. But it ought to be possible to do whatever it needs repairing below ground without having to close the full width of the street when you've got two moving lanes and two parking lanes. I would think that they could do things part with and let one lane stay open for moving traffic. The mess tonight was horrible.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCarthy. Does anyone else wish to comment? Mr. Dalton, if you'll step to the podium, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Robert Dalton, five twenty Douglas Avenue. I'm the Veterans Representative, uh, for the Office of Employment and Training. I work in Winchester and Richmond, but I'm also resident here of Lexington. That's why I'm coming here tonight, talk to you. All day long, I deal with veterans that come into our office, uh, both disabled, those who are just recently returned from Iraq and Afghanistan, and also those who have been back for quite a long time. Some of the people I've talked to have been, it's been very difficult for them to be able to talk about the issues and the problems that they've dealt with, uh, in the war zone. Um, I know we, I had, I had read an article a couple of days ago in the Herald Leader about some of the problems with our veterans, how middle-class veterans, those who are low-income, can't afford health care. With low income, they, they can't pay for private insurance, and those who make more money are, those, uh, those who are low-income are, make too much money though to be able to get free medical care. I come here today because I'm hoping and asking that we all remember the veterans as Veterans Day comes up in about ten days. We need to honor and respect their sacrifices that these veterans have given to us, not only them themselves, but also their families and the hardships that they have put through as the veterans are out there putting their lives and even the body parts on the line for us, keeping us safe. I hope that this community, this government, and the communities across the county wealth, we remember them in the ne, in those ten days from now. And for those who don't know, this is the thirtieth anniversary of the Disabled Veterans Outreach Program. It was signed into law thirty years ago by President Carter, and, uh, I was in high school back then, so it's been quite a while, but I hope we can all remember them, all the veterans. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dalton. Any further comment for the council? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion and-
Second.
Second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you.